Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call our meeting to order. This is Scottsburg City Council on November the 8th, 2021, in the year of our Lord. And the first thing we'll do is call it an order. And after we call it an order, we have a prayer and we have a pledge of allegiance. So if you all don't mind standing on your prayer, we'll say the pledge, please. Father, we come before you this evening to just thank you for your love and your goodness and kindness unto us. Thank you, Father, for marinating that you founded this country. Father, you have brought its people to it. We thank you, Father, for the nations that have given people to America. And we stand strong. Father, we pray for our wisdom, for our president, for representatives from the senators, Father, and just pray for your presence, Father, discernment, Father. And thank you, Father, for Scottsburg and for all that live here. We thank you for your presence. We pray, Father, for your protection and for your love for us. Keep us in your cell, Father. Thank you, Father, we have many workers here, so we pray your blessing upon them. As we pray for them each day, Father, just lift them up to you. For their safety and for their goodness to our citizens here. Thank you for all that we do, and we ask in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. The Lord bless America. The next thing on our agenda is the roll call from our clerk treasurer, Jan Reddick.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Bill Hogland.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Here.
Okay, all in attendance. The next thing we have is the approval of the amendments for October the 25th, 2021 meeting. We'll accept a motion to... For the amendments as presented.
I'll make a motion to per... That's presented.
Okay, made motion made by Chris Albertson, seconded by Chuck Rose. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign. unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing we have is the public comment period. The Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Your remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Would anyone like to come forward this evening and address the city council? Going once, going twice. Come here. Please state your name.
My name is Steven Switzer. I am the honored operator of Barbecue Paradise here in town. Read over your ordinance again. Last year we tried this, and let's be honest, it would have put me out of business completely. So last page alone would have put me out of business. Question that I have is, where does it stop? You know, we have a much bigger issue here in town. We've got broken orders that can't keep up, whether they're understaffed or they can't get inventory. Why are we trying to restrict and hold back food trucks instead of, I don't know, taking advantage from all of our surrounding counties? And deadpan spot for us. Salem's got a spot, Charlestown has a spot, Jeffersonville just spent $2.5 million to put a spot in for food trucks. And I know that because they got all over me and asked me to come down there. We've got... Every surrounding county is begging food trucks to come and help with their problem. But it seems like Scott County is pushing them away. I'm gonna say the better. I can't do a whole lot with my life. But I do have a passion for cooking and feeding people and telling them to smile on their face. And it seems to me like, City of Scottsburg, they say they want growth and they want good businesses, but when they show up, they wanna shut them down. My question is why? That's all I have.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Well, you said the last page of the proposed ordinance would put you out of business. What?
From last year's ordinance.
Did you read the new one?
Yes, I had everything.
I mean, I myself didn't think it was much in there to restrict food trucks other than where they can operate.
Right.
And, you know, if you set up on someone's private property in their lot and you're compliant with all the state and local regulations, health regulations, I don't think there's anything that would prohibit that.
You're absolutely right. And in touch on that, the last section of the new ordinance talks about fire safety. Are you all aware that the health department is required to check on that? So now we're having somebody double check because we don't trust our health department?
I think it's just in there as a precaution. I mean, I don't know that the fire department's gonna go around checking every food truck, but if they can, I mean, if you're in compliance, what does it matter?
You're right, what does it matter? Why are we wasting taxpayers' money by talking about it?
I don't think we're wasting taxpayers' money.
That's your opinion, and I have my opinion.
Okay, I just wondered if there was anything in that... You said the ordinance said it put you out of business, and I...
From last year it was.
Okay, all right, okay. And that's what's been revised and...
But this one here, there's two parts to it, and one of them is, don't break the current law that we already have. And the other one is, don't break the law that we currently have, but we want the fire marshal to inspect too. Who pays the fire marshal?
I don't know, is it the fire marshal or the...
The fire chief, fire whatever, however it's safe. Who pays that?
The city pays the fire chief.
Well, the city gets their money from taxpayers' money, correct? Okay, how do we pay the health department?
I assume by taxpayer dollars.
So essentially, we're spending twice the taxpayer's dollars just to have an ordinance that says, don't break the law.
So basically, your only concern or your only issue with the new ordinance is double inspection for fire?
No, no, my concern with this ordinance that's on the table right now is, where does it stop? If you get an ordinance on the table, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a whole lot easier to amend an ordinance than it is to pass an ordinance.
And so I guess to follow up on that, a couple questions I have. Last year we had this ordinance. I was one of the ones that spoke up against anything on private property. I don't think that's the government's role and it shouldn't ever be the government's role. That's why on this ordinance, I was also very adamant about the fact that there would be no fine or fee for you guys to set up and operate your business. Again, in my opinion, not the government's role. So in this, I feel as though it does a good job of keeping us accountable for our property as a government entity and a business separate. Now, as far as the fire inspection is concerned, it appears to me, and again, I'm not an attorney, I would defer to our attorney, that it's very vague language that states, shall include but is not limited to fire extinguishers, grease laden vapor systems, and compressed gas for cooking. Is this something that you guys currently maintain anyways?
Yes.
So...
Which is inspected by the health department.
Okay. So as far as making this harder on local businesses, is it just a step of giving it an inspection?
No, I have no problem being inspected every single day if that's what I need to.
So help me understand, what's the...
The issue that I have with this particular ordinance, I asked a question and I've gotten no response. Is it or is it not easier to amend an ordinance than it is to pass an ordinance?
It still takes the same process.
Three reads.
Yeah, it takes three reads.
Takes three reads.
The penalty, ask which follows, it's the same process.
And I think this ordinance is here, and again, I know Mr. Reddick's had an issue with last meeting, this is only discussing city-owned property. So if anyone wants to set up like Iowa Beach or Park, wherever city-owned property is, we need to make sure who that is. I don't know, I do actually have, and we can talk about it when it comes up, I do have small tweaking ordinance I would like to see, but I just, I guess I don't see the prohibiting businesses part of this. I mean, other than I guess another inspection, if that's what you're referring to, but I don't see a fine or penalty.
With the law that John announced two weeks ago, no, this ordinance really does not affect me today.
Correct.
But is it going to affect me in the future? I firmly believe it will.
From what standpoint?
All standpoint. Last year we tried to pass an ordinance that was, what, 18 pages long? The last paragraph of that would have put me out of business, just that paragraph.
Oh, wow, that's why I said we're not getting near this.
So, yes, my fear is that we're gonna pass an ordinance, and then we're gonna start making little bitty tweaks to it here and there, to the point that it puts them out of business again. Instead of trying to come up with a solution to, hey, if you're gonna run a food truck in Scott County, this is where you're gonna go if you're not on private property.
So the municipalities that you operate in, if you were set up on their property or private property, do they have a permit for you to do that?
What...
So you mentioned Jeffersonville, you mentioned Salem, New Orleans, those places. Do they require you or are you charged to get a permit to operate within those municipalities?
And Salem, I don't know that it's necessarily a permit, the city owns it.
But you have to pay, you have to pay.
$75 a year. Charlestown, I honestly don't know what the fee is, if there is one. The city of Jeffersonville, they just spent $2.5 million? No, they called me and said, hey, we have electricity, we have water, and a dump station. All we want is your truck, and you serve food down here.
Well, and that's...
There's no nothing.
And that's why, when we had this discussion last year, I made sure that we all agreed that there would be no fees, we wanna have a competitive advantage to welcome you guys in here. We don't wanna charge a fee in the big amount. So, I mean, we're gonna add this on the agenda, but I just wanted to ask those questions.
Well, I understand it's on the agenda, and I've said quietly, and I felt like it was my time to say my piece about it.
For sure, and I appreciate that, absolutely.
Any other questions?
No, I just, you know, I understand where you're coming from. This is your livelihood.
Right.
I get it. I think, and I can only speak for myself, okay, just like when we passed the ordinance about asking contractors to license, we didn't have a fee to it, just so that we know who's operating. You know, I don't know, on our property, it's a little different than in private property, just to stop you from operating. But I get where you're coming from, and that's the reason the last ordinance really didn't even get one read past one read, because like you said...
Right, it was very good.
And I agree with you.
Right.
So, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Let me just make one comment to you. At least on an entrepreneurial side, if you go over to Salem and you park in front of the stores and you're blocking their customers from getting in there, that's kind of what this is about, just to give you a heads up. I mean, that's what it's about.
I understand your comment, but as an owner myself, if I'm gonna block another store, I'm not gonna be invited back.
Say again, please.
If I'm gonna sit there and block another store or block somebody else's pathway, they're not gonna invite me back. It's gonna hurt my business more than it hurts their business.
And so, but thank you for coming, and thank you for your service, Tom Hunter, sir. Anybody else to see? Okay, here's nothing else, I'm gonna close the public comment section. We'll go now on to old business. This is the second reading of ordinance 2021-33, an ordinance establishing a policy on mobile home concessions. This is for the second reading, is there a motion to pass ordinance 2021-33 on second reading?
I have a couple comments on this, and I did not catch on the first reading. We discussed this ordinance obviously in detail on section 66-71 on C. It talks about, obviously, if there's a food truck or any other mobile concession that wants to come on city property, it will be given by the city board of public works and safety. I would like to see that amended to be us, where the elected officials, not the board of works. I would like that to be the change. If there would be a second, I would like to make a motion as amended, turn to the board of works and put the city council.
I'll second that. I think the city council ought to, just like folks in the street, I think the city council, we are elected. I agree with you. Well, I'll second that. We have a motion to amend section 66-72, item C, changing the verbiage from the city's board of public works and safety to city council. So I'm assuming your motion aim is to go forward with that change? This was seconded by Rick Mans. Any other questions, Congressman Reddick? Okay, all papers, we have a first and second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Okay, so passed. Does council want to go any further, just let's just go for the third reading?
I just do need to go on third reading. I don't wanna...
Robbery shit?
I think, you know, we've had a public comment, and there might be more.
Sure, I'll take a question. Okay, thank you very much. Go down to new business now. The first reading is ordinance 2021-27, orders to adopt rental policy and rates for the Mid-America Science Park. And that's been in your packet, with a motion to pass ordinance 2021-27.
I have a couple of questions first, Mayor. Jill, I was looking through some things right before I came, and I found those notes about the room rates that Linda had recommended, that we raised from $75, $55 to $100, because she's already getting that, because she's already charging that. The items, if you look on the list, 19, 20, 21, rooms 305, 308, 311, she had, she's already charged $100 a day for the classrooms. And I guess I have another question. I know, Mayor, you said that you were going to lease training room 12, 212A to 212C, and the daily rate in there is for weekdays is $120 a day, that's if they built a classroom. So if you're intent to lease that to someone, do we leave that off? Do we have it on here? And I guess then that whole, that whole kind of worms can be applied to any others room been here. I mean, if there's a classroom that we say is priced for $100 a day, and you or someone else leases it for a monthly rate, then it comes off the daily schedule, and, you know, I'm trying to figure out how all that works in my mind.
Yeah, for sure.
From my standpoint, I thought it'd be fast enough, comment, because you'd have someone vacate or terminate a lease or whatever, then you still have the right to...
Okay, and I get that, but who decides the lease?
So the lease agreement.
Yeah, I mean, you know, who decides that the lease agreement, that's advantageous to the daily rate and, is that gonna work?
It's gonna work, yeah.
So your recommendation is just to leave those on there and increase the daily rate for those three classrooms to $100, and that's to the week?
My recommendation is to make sure that they're still on at this occasion, dog removal, and then you guys can determine that rate, but I would want to remove them in a situation where we have them become available for daily use and not be on the machine.
You know, with that said as well, maybe this is something we pass on first reading, and then go out there and look at these elements as well.
I've looked, I'm probably gonna go look again.
Yeah, there's several, though, that I...
You go look.
Well, I got some one room for $5 for half a day.
Maybe a quality out there, I think they listed about every space out there.
Yes.
I thought I'd pass on first reading. Did the contracts and all that, that passed board of works out there, I'll get through them.
The rental agreements and those kinds of things.
There was two leases that passed, China.
The what?
There was two leases that passed, one was a...
I mean, though, didn't we have, wasn't there rental information and those kinds of things on there?
Was it a contract, there was some change that could be made?
Okay, okay.
Could I make a comment, if you don't mind? I had thought there had been some discussion, you know, from the time these came out about the rental of the banquet hall, and I see that's still on here at $1,000. If you talk to people, wedding venues, and that's what I see, that's what that is used for mostly, a lot of times it's used locally by our local organizations, but I personally think that that was too old for wedding venues. But, yeah.
I'll second Jan's comments on that, for sure.
Well, and I know, Chuck, when we met early on about that, we had that discussion with someone whose daughter was getting married, and I know someone else has said that, but I don't have a vote, I just have a whole...
No, I think we had three that we should have...
That is all, that's what I was...
Yeah, I'll be, again, I'll look more down here, where I make notes on the training center.
Yes.
You're exactly right, so we want to, we want to just wait, revise this, and address it next meeting, or you'll pass on the first reading, and then revise, it's like, never revision.
Whatever your choice is, but I do think it needs to be looked at closely. I have a question for Josh as well. The clerk treasurer's office is telling us that sales tax is added in this ordinance? On the sheet here or...
No, on top of it. We pay taxes, any rentals we have, we pay rentals on our park, we pay, and we pay tax on the rentals in our parks, on our depot. We have to pay tax on this, and we paid $1,100 last month, and I think it was 500 and something. I don't know, it's just, but we would suggest that it's be, the tax be on top of that and just not included in the rate, because yes, we do pay the state of Indiana sales tax.
That's up to you, however you want.
Yeah, that's what I say, we put it out there.
Include the taxes, so it's $5 whatever, not $5.37.
Well, I think, yeah, just like renting a hotel room. It's there, it's the rate, but you pay taxes.
And the other thing, Chuck, that might help is if you included on here a monthly rate?
I don't know if that helps or not. I think it would, but I don't know with, you know, the mayor kind of negotiates those things, so I don't know if that...
And then to me, if it's a monthly rate, it shouldn't be taxed, it shouldn't.
If it's a lease, if it's not a rental, I think it does change, it would change it. But this is, that's a separate issue from what's on the sheet, I mean, as far as the tax collection. But yeah, I mean, if we go into a lease, a long-term lease versus a for a rental.
So I think we do need to have differentiation there, because, you know, is this gonna be a special amendment, we have great force of... But these are folks coming in this way.
These are limited numbers. Do you want to have a monthly rate in here?
I think I would.
Okay, you're gonna have to come up with that?
Yeah, that's why I didn't want these passed the seeking, because I don't have a monthly rate. So what you're asking is the table, is that what you're asking, Mayor? I would think it would, I mean, if you want to pass my first reading...
If you're gonna add a monthly rate, I don't see a sense in passing it on a single reading. And I guess the other thing is, the whole reason, Jan, that the whole reason we're trying to run this through, not rush it through, but get it taken care of as soon as possible is for your office, so, you know.
Yes, and I understand that, but we have a senior concierge out there now, and our offices, we're gonna draw line and sand with that last couple, three months, you know, on, but we do need, it's just, that's the way it is for anything we do, to us, to charge anything, we need to find what's stated, and I don't know if council, if Tish copied you, the council on that, what we found, that we have some other discrepancies that we would like to see taken care of, but we've made you aware of it, and I appreciate you trying to get this done for the sake of my office, but I would much rather have a much cleaner document than what this is here.
Mayor, you think you can have your monthly rate still in here by the next meeting?
Sure, I'm trying.
I mean, I just, I'm trying to put in, I don't wanna...
We'll get to work on that, yeah. To me, I think we ought to have a wait a month, and that way there's a lot of sales tax involved with that and as well.
I'll make a motion to second.
I guess I can tell you what, and you second that?
I do.
Josh, you have a second, okay, I'll hear you. Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, next thing we have is the approval of the 2022 holiday closing list. We'll accept a motion to accept holiday closing list as presented. Are you seeing any area you want to change?
I mean, you can look at the fourth table and everything concerning, we could, it's good to hear.
Yes, yes. I guess I would ask, do we get Juneteenth? Wasn't that the new federal holiday that they made? I don't see it on here, and I always heard we needed to buy my federal holidays because we get so much money.
I plan to take it off some.
You gonna take it off, well, I don't know, with all the employees here, the question I wonder if...
I'm tired of it.
Do we get Juneteenth? I'm still planning to be working here.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of holidays, holiday schedule for 2022.
Chuck Rose makes a motion to approve the holidays as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Albertson, seconds, questions, concerns?
Can't believe it's this time of year already, they don't look at 2022.
It's, yeah, it's time for a...
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing we have on our agenda this evening is permission to close Washington, McLean, First, and Wardell Streets for the Christmas parade on November 27th, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
Wait, wait just a sec, sorry, sorry. Main Street also needs to be added to that. So the reason Washington's on it is because the parade will line up in the Old and preschool parking lot and come off of it, and then I would like to revise for the square to be closed from 5:00 to 10:00 that day. I know that's longer than normal, but we just booked a horse and carriage for after the parade for four hours, so we were hoping that that's something some families could do, if that's okay with you all.
So a closure of the square from 5:00 to 10:00 on November 27th, as well as closing Main Street in addition to the Abus Streets.
I guess, do we approve McLean? Does this, I mean, because that's a state highway.
I get a permit, I have a permit for it.
Okay, so do we need that in here, that we close it, or does the state?
I just get a permit to close it, I would include it in my writing.
Okay. I've already talked to Chief Sellers, he says as long as I tell Jason it comes out, we're just gonna go, so.
Can you get his comes out?
But he's in priority, wasn't he?
Most Jason says he's gonna go. I'll make a motion to approve.
President Alves makes a motion to approve it as presented with the changes, which would include Main Street closing, the square from 5:00 to 10:00.
Correct.
Rick Mans, seconds, persons come as concerns? General, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Unanimous, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
The next thing we have is resolution 2021-R-12, a resolution establishing a COVID-19 premium pay program.
Mayor, I can go ahead and take the lead on this. This is a resolution that us as council have talked about for a while. I came to council with a proposal a few weeks ago, we've had discussions internally, there's some things that we need to clarify, but at this point in the process, I think this is best to have a public meeting and discuss some of the options and some of the issues that we ran into on this. As most of you are aware, the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan funds, allow municipalities to issue, we were allotted amounts, that we were allowed to issue funds for four or five different, I guess reasoning is the best way to put it, very, very limited scope, wastewater, water broadband, loss of revenue, premium pay. Am I missing any on that? I think that covers it. So I came forward with council and had a discussion about premium pay, which basically defined in the ARP funds as pay for our city employees who worked in the pandemic. I think it's a, we live in a country that pays people to stay home, and I think that the work that you guys have done throughout the pandemic is necessary for set amount that's in the resolution. The problem... The problem that we've run into to this point, and it's just something that we need to work out, is how do we define what that time period looks like? So, I know some of our neighboring communities have passed this already. Resolution that for us tonight states the amount, two thousand five hundred dollars, but it does not define exactly what that scope is, that timeline is. So, I guess, with the introduction of this resolution, I will open it up for council to have discussion as we've kind of talked about to this point, so.
So, I think, you know, from my perspective, I appreciate the city employees keep things on, and it's been a difficult time for all of us, and I think, you know, the premium base, certainly, something I think that our employees are, I don't want caution, that is, as these things come out, there's always more and more federal guidance, and federal guidance is usually not a very positive thing, but it kind of, it kind of roaches in a little bit as far as what you're able to do. So, you know, we do have some things that we want to try to work through, and certainly from a city standpoint, I want to make sure that whatever we do that would state board accounts comes in odds, that, you know, we, we're doing everything by the book, and that there aren't gonna be issues there, and, you know, although for just some of the things that, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure happens, so, just hanging there with, work out the details, that's kind of what I would hear from me. Anybody else?
No, I mean, I might be this done as quickly as possible.
Exactly.
To help them out, you know, make sure that our folks are taken care of.
I think to the comment, I was referencing earlier, I think one of the things that, when I introduced this, one of the things that we got to clarify is, since this pay is in response to COVID-19, we want to obviously award this money to those who've worked during the pandemic, right? So, depending on how these pay periods work out, it might be a situation where we're paying people who've been here for three days, two weeks, something like that, in a situation. So, we just have to work that detail out. I know some communities have done it based upon the next pay period, which, you know, that's my view, sometimes we might do. I don't know exactly the details upon that, but from my standpoint, speaking for myself, that's why I wanted to get this in front of council tonight. I'm a firm believer in this, I think that there needs to be a plan in place. I presented a plan, unfortunately, I haven't seen any other plans as far as ARP money, and how we're going to utilize that outside of premium pay, but that's what we're at today, so.
The council wants to speak?
I guess my question is, is as far as new employees, you know, when do benefits take place? When are we eligible for benefits? After ninety, ninety days?
No, when they're hired, they're eligible for their medical.
So, there's no waiting period there, so. There's obviously a point in having a waiting period for COVID-19 premium pay, either in my opinion.
There is a, there's, we have to look into one thing, and that's what, whatever council decides on, I will be, you know, working with state board of accounts to see that we do it legally, but it's a matter of so many dollars over, like thirteen dollars over what you would have made, and there's a formula, so, that is, you know, and I've spoken with Christian earlier, that's one thing that we will have to work out with state board of accounts. I also know, I mean, as much as we'd like to do it, as Christian said, maybe in the next page, please, everybody, it won't happen that quickly, because council, and this came from state board of accounts today, because both, two of my, Marita and Malina are both at state board of accounts school, and council has to appropriate that money for us to be able to spend it. So, that will, I assume, take an additional appropriation, and, yeah, and then that has to be advertised, so, this won't happen overnight. And just with those guidelines, correct, Josh, because there's a time period advertised and.
Correct, and that's handled in section one of this to give, to cover that, but, yeah, we would have to advertise and have the public hearing, and then after the public hearing could approve it.
When you say after the public hearing, that the public hearing approval could take place on the same, during same meeting?
Correct, I think the only issue that I have to look at the calendar is, we have to publish, our public hearing is ten days, and the closing will be Wednesday, the newspaper's on Wednesday, look on the calendar. I don't know if we're gonna do it.
At the next meeting, it's probably in December.
I think that was, the date we were, if we'd like to, but, you know, the first meeting in December.
And I guess I would defer this to Josh, too, because I know, and everything, and this is one thing that I had in the state board of accounts, because Chuck mentioned wanting to keep them happy, that, yeah. The key documents for an audit is, number one, an ordinance which we have in place, and then it says the local plan. I have never seen a formal plan written, but it appears here, and I can find out from Susan Gordon if that has to be approved by council before this can be done.
No, I think they're probably not a formal plan that's been drafted, but I can pretty well tell you what the consensus of the council is as far as the balance of that money is concerned, and we should point out that we're gonna receive half of it, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, Josh, do you know if that has to be in a formal document?
We have to, we have the state board of account, their form that they sent out, we've approved that, we've adopted that.
As far as the plan is concerned?
No, so you're talking about two different things. The plan was the original document they sent out in May of June, so we've adopted that.
Okay.
And that has, basically adopts the language that's in the federal legislation as far as what we do. So, then, my understanding from the directive, from the last state board of accounts directive, that was, I think, a month ago, is it chapter appropriate? So, it still has to be the additional appropriation.
But this money can't be moved out of that.
Correct, which not everyone's following, which, across the state, but that's one of the things that was highlighted in that last directive, is that it has to be.
And that's what lady told myself today, so.
So, when you're saying plan, Josh, it's the state board of accounts, not necessarily our.
Yeah, I've not seen any required state board of accounts, as they're asking to adopt it, you felt, you felt plan. They have, they have to adopt the general ordinance, which state board of accounts sent out the draft, which is what we approved.
We have the ordinance, and it also lists a local plan, so I'll go, I'll ask them.
Let us get some info on that, if we need a plan, like I said, I don't think.
Shouldn't be difficult to do.
I think it would be.
Anything else? And we'll ask for a vote.
Are we going to vote on this now, I guess?
So, I guess I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
Since we have five months, how do you feel about if we could advertise this, move in our 22nd council meeting to the 29th, so that we can get this possibly done for our city employees by advertising? Instead of waiting till December, what would that be, December or?
It'd be the second Monday, it'd be the thirteenth.
If we went, go ahead and move the 22nd to the 29th?
I'm gonna be in town for that whole week, but, I mean, that's okay, I'll go in by phone or go on the family. I just wanted to point out that I plan around the council people.
But I do, I guess my thought is, if we, if we get that, so that it's here before Christmas for our employees, I just feel like moving on Monday night is not a big deal.
I totally agree.
That was allowed the ten days.
That's a good point.
That would have advertising.
Can I, I'll make a motion to remove our scheduled 22nd city council meeting to the 29th.
I'll second that. Chris, I'm with some seconds, and so we're gonna vote for this, as well as going forward and passing this resolution 2021-R-12.
I don't think we're gonna pass the resolution right now.
No.
But I think there's a tweaking, if we do that here, right now, we're just voting to move the council meeting to the 29th.
Because I want these guys all to see the positive movement for it, so, thank you very much. Okay, well, anything else to say? Papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, like, say aye? unanimous. Thank you so very much for passing, these guys have been out with two different, two different departments, and there have been some concerns, so I'm thankful to see council passes, so thank you very much. Last thing we have is our announcement of DNR. I said, on behalf of the IDNR Division of Forestry, I would like to congratulate you on being awarded eighteen thousand dollars in federal sub-grant funds for the 2021 Community Urban Forestry Assistance Grant Project. Your project is part of the grant awarded to Division of Forestry from the USPA Forest Service, northeastern area. We are able to fund the projects, able to, we're able to fund fourteen projects totaling two hundred and thirty thousand, so we want you to see that Scottsburg was able to eighteen thousand dollars. Thank you, Mel, be a great, and those on the tree committee. What do we have for announcements now?
Just remind everyone of the executive session.
Okay, we have an executive session following this, anything else? We have veterans here, I want to remind everybody that this Thursday is Veterans Day, and we live in democracy that is so precious, and we don't live in a communistic or dictatorial system, we live in a democracy. And we want to shout out to those of you who served, and for those who have served, thank you, can't help it. So, we're here because of you guys, and y'all, so thank you so very much. Anything else?
Good season, big folks out tonight.
Just to piggyback on that Veterans Day, the company I work for is doing a Veterans Day recognition program. If you guys know any veterans that's shut in, maybe doesn't have any family, maybe not able to get out, let me know. I want to get them certificate out in that penning to thank them for their services, so, deal with me if you guys know anybody.
What'd you say, Chuck?
No, I just, good hand, nothing. I thought you was wrong.
Okay, do we need a motion to adjourn then?
Make the motion.
Christian makes a motion to adjourn, we're adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so very much.